... everybody, I call to order the September 8th, 2015, Saline County Commission Public Forum and Meeting. Will the Clerk call the roll?
Commissioner Chadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Gahl.
Here.
Commissioner Price.
Commissioner Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
I would ask everybody to stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move now on to the public forum, and it's normally a time set aside for citizens to talk for less than three minutes, and after last week, I'd just like to further kind of explain how we do these things. It's a time for citizens to come forward with their concerns on county government, let's limit it to that, and it's not a time for us to rebut or to cut in. I mean, you've got three minutes to tell us, we're happy to listen. It is also not a time, it's not a Q and A session, too, so, you know, this is a time for us to hear from you, to digest it, to think about it, and it is limited to county business. So, we had a couple of concerns last week, and I'm sorry, all the Commissioners aren't here, and I'll repeat that next week also, but it's three minutes of uninterrupted time. So, was there anyone that would like to come forward at this time?
Karen Shade, 111 Wisconsin. I wanted to thank Commissioner Chadwick for his letter to the editor that it was printed in Sunday, Saturday's Journal. I, the more I read it, the better I like it. There's a lot of wisdom and good sentiment there. For the most part, if the public goes onto the website and reads the agenda and the supporting documents, and then they come to this meeting, they will hear appropriate questions asked and reasonable decisions being made. It's unfortunate that a few comments seem to be the focus of what a lot of people perceive is happening here. So, I think the, I strongly encourage you all to take additional steps with the code of ethics, and I look forward to a return of the focus on government and the tough decisions that have to be made by this group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Ruska, 235 North Santa Fe. I've brought this subject up before, and I believe the Chairman already knows it, but I'd like to do it once again so that we can get it resolved. It's about the planning and zoning bylaws. I went over and looked, and I couldn't find them, and so I would just wanted to reemphasize that so that could get taken care of, and that's pretty much it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Judy Larson, 715 North Ninth. I can't even put into words how thrilled I was with Commissioner Chadwick's letter to the editor, because it was such a demonstration of the leadership and the strength that has been unenforced, I guess is a good word. But it was just such a cool job, and I was just so happy to see it, and thank you so very much for standing up.
Thank you. Seeing nobody else that would like to come forward at this time, we'll move on to regular business. Item number one.
Proclamation for the month of September is National Recovery Month. Have Mr. Don Green from the Central Kansas Foundation to read the proclamation.
Welcome, Mr. Green.
Hi, everybody. I'm Don Green, Senior Recovery Coach and Manager of the Pathfinder Recovery Center at Central Kansas Foundation. I'd like to ask the Commission to proclaim September as National Recovery Month. Join the voices of recovery, visible, vocal, and valuable. Whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention and of mental and substance use disorders works, treatment is effective in the people in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance use disorders is essential in achieving healthy lifestyles, both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with mental and substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to the appropriate treatment and recovery support services, and whereas in 2012, two and a half million people aged 12 or older received specialty treatment for a substance use disorder, and more than 31 and a half million adults aged 18 or older received mental health services according to the 2011 National Survey on Drug Use and Health. Given the serious nature of this public health problem, we must continue to reach the millions more who need help, and whereas on October 1st, 2013, as a result of the Affordable Care Act, more than 11 million uninsured individuals with behavioral health needs will become eligible for affordable insurance coverage for their treatment needs. According to 2011 National Survey on Drug Use and Health, we must ensure that all of these individuals successfully enrolled into coverage, and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration, the White House Office of National Drug Control Policy, the Central Kansas Foundation, and the Pathfinder Recovery Center invite all residents of Saline County to participate in National Recovery Month.
Very good. Any other activities going on at this time?
Why, yes. You're all invited to a Recovery Month celebration and barbecue in Jerry Ivy Park, Saturday, September 12th, and it begins at 12:00 P.M. We'll have a bounce house, so we're very kid-friendly, from 12 to 5, from Tammy's Bounceroos. At 12:30 P.M., we'll be an opening speaker. From 1 to 4, we have a bunch of activities going on. Food, fun, and games, music by Mattson and Weaver, a water balloon toss, face painting for the young kids, and a recovery tug-of-war. At 2:00 P.M., there'll also be a scavenger hunt and a signature card raffle, and we'll be giving away donations all day. If you just come and you'll get a ticket, and you'll have a chance to win a nice prize. And at 4:00 P.M. we'll be having recovery speakers. Hot dogs and hamburgers will be served. Also, and this is first for Topeka, join us on a trip to Capitol Hill in Topeka, Kansas to celebrate recovery. CKF is planning to show their support and commitment to recovery to the Kansas Department of Aging and Disability Services Recovery Celebration at the Kansas State Capitol on September 25th, from 1 to 5:00 P.M. We encourage all members of the recovery community to attend this celebration along with CKF and their staff. We'd like a good representation from the recovery community and the state Capitol to show their commitment to recovery, and we need their continued engagement. CKF will provide transportation from Salina to Topeka for the celebration. The buses, the bus or buses are scheduled to leave around 11:30 a.m. and return back by 6:30. To reserve a spot on the bus, please contact Kathy at the Central Kansas Foundation, and our number is 825-6224, or you'll also get more information available on our website, C-Kstaff.org. Thank the Commission for their time.
Very good. Very good, Don, and I have your signed proclamation here.
Thank you, sir.
Item number two.
Have another proclamation as for declaring the month of September as National Preparedness Month, and we have Hannah Stanball.
Mr. Clerk, did that need action?
Oh, there is action here, yes, sorry.
Okay.
Probably, before we get started on that.
Parliamentarian, weren't we talking about that?
I was looking at it, but you were wanting to be one.
Anybody that was upstairs this morning.
Move ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair, I move that we declare the month of September 2015 as National Recovery Month.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes 3 to 0.
Okay, now, number two. This is proclamation for the month of September is National Preparedness Month. We have Hannah Stanball, Emergency Management Director, and Jason Tiller, Health Department Coordinator. One of them, I assume, is going to read that proclamation.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I have my partner in crime, our preparedness partner over at the Health Department here, so we figure this would be the best time for us to do this together as departments. This is a proclamation to proclaim National Preparedness Month, September of 2015. Whereas the National Preparedness Month creates an important opportunity for every resident in Saline County, Kansas, to prepare their homes, businesses, and communities for any type of emergency, to include natural disasters and potential terrorist attacks. And whereas investing in the preparedness of ourselves, our families, businesses, and communities can reduce fatalities and economic devastation in our communities and in our nation. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Ready Campaign, Citizens Corps, and other federal, state, local, tribal, territorial, private, and volunteer agencies are working to increase public activities in preparing for emergencies and to educate individuals on how to take action. And whereas emergency preparedness is a responsibility of every citizen in Saline County, Kansas, and all citizens are urged to make preparedness a priority and work together as a team to ensure that individuals, families, and communities are prepared for disasters and emergencies of any type. And whereas all citizens of Saline County, Kansas, are encouraged to participate in citizen preparedness activities and ask to visit the websites of the Ready Campaign at ready.gov and become more prepared. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Saline County, Kansas, here proclaims September 2015 as National Preparedness Month, and encourages all citizens and businesses to develop their own emergency preparedness plans and work together towards creating a more prepared society.
Very good. Do you have any other events going on this week?
We do. We've actually got quite a bit.
Okay.
We've already done one public presentation at this Salina Public Library last Wednesday, had some other community partners with us to talk about preparedness and building emergency kits. We have been doing updates daily on our county Facebook site, providing information or resources for people to go to and find out more information on how to become prepared. Jason has prepared a display over at the Saline County Health Department in their, your window on Seventh Street.
Yep, our west-facing windows. We have one display so far, and there'll be other displays with infographics and information for Preparedness Month that can be easily viewed from the sidewalk, so at any time it can be looked at, as well as posting information on our Health Department Facebook and Twitter as well.
So, other than that, we just have, citizens are more than welcome to contact our office. We would be more than happy to come out and do any type of public presentation to businesses or groups on preparedness, or just any topic that you'd like to about emergency management. We're always available to do so. Be more than happy to do that. So, citizens can contact our office, and we can certainly work with them and get something set up.
Very good. Action on this.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we declare the month of September 2015 as National Preparedness Month.
I'll second that.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes 3 to 0, and I have your signed proclamation.
Before we move on, Mr. Chair, I think we need an amendment for today's agenda. I think we are requesting that item number three be taken off of today's agenda. We had a discussion upstairs about the Advisory Board and the bylaws for the Health Department, and we're going to postpone that for now, so I move that we take item number three off of today's agenda.
And I second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes 3 to 0.
And I would assume that Commissioner Larson, you want to go ahead and table this for future.
Do you take it off, or do you table it as well?
This would be tabled for future discussion.
Okay, well, I wanted it off the agenda and tabled.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to clarify. I know you didn't say that.
And I know you're the parliamentarian, so just fix the wording on that for the minutes to reflect.
Fix the wording if the other two Commissioners are in agreement.
Yes.
I agree.
All right, thank you.
Move on to item number four.
Okay, it's RFA 176-15, an amendment 13 to Resolution Number 878, renaming a frontage road next to Old Highway 81 near Rafter M Lane to Clearview Road. Staff report by David Neal, our Planning and Zoning Director.
Mr. Neal.
Morning, Commissioners. Just kind of a review of what we've talked about before on the 25th. I, see if this thing works. Nope, not too well. There it goes. I set up a copy of what has happened out in these properties in the history, or at least a quick history. The problem that we're experiencing is having services delivered to the houses. They're having trouble finding the houses. One of the main issues is that this road right here, Rafter M, has no direct access to Old Highway 81, so there is no Rafter M street sign directing people onto that road. You end up having to turn at this frontage road that has no name, where I put a little star there. A lot of times, you'll end up missing that road, so it's a little difficult to find. As a recap, our addressing policy for the county is to address from the driveways. Before, all of the top properties here, the five or so properties up here, were all addressed off of 6185, Old Highway 81, and then these bottom two properties were addressed off of 6061, Old Highway 81. This property didn't exist at the time. It was all just one big parcel there. In 2005, plat was done for, it was called Rafter M subdivision. It divided this parcel eight into two lots and created a private drive named Rafter M. A little bit after that, Mr. Kurt Marshall built his house. It was addressed off of Rafter M, since that's where the driveway is located. This year, several of the neighbors in the area requested that the county change their address. Since their driveways are fronting Rafter M, we changed their address to a Rafter M driveway. And then, this is what it looks like today. All of the blue ones are off of Rafter M. These two yellow ones are addressed off of Old Highway 81, even though they're fronting that unnamed road. And then, this one here is addressed off of Old Highway 81, but it's fronting Rafter M. The motion and resolution in front of you would provide a name for this frontage road. One of the neighbors came up with the name Clearview Road, which is an acceptable name. There's no duplicate names out there. It would change the addresses. You can see in red here, we, I made an estimate of what the address would be. Don't quote that as the actual address yet, but it would change Mr. Spencer's property and the Potter's property. And in the motion from our discussion on the 25th, you had mentioned not wanting to change the address for Mr. Sly's property as Old Highway 81. So, the motion would end up setting your addresses and street names what you see in front of you.
So, there would be no change on Sly's address, is what I'm understanding?
When you make the motion, correct, when you make the motion specifically state that you want that address not changed, and I believe that's in your RFA and the motion listed out.
Yes, and the, as you mentioned, the homes that would change their address to Clearview are aware that their addresses would change, two homes.
Correct. The Potter's.
Two residences.
The Potter's and James Spencer's.
And they are perfectly okay with it.
Correct.
Okay, they're aware of this.
Correct. Further questions of staff?
Well, not really.
Okay.
I think that Clearwater was, that was the other, Clearview was the other part that was going to change, right?
Only if we're okay with it.
Only if we're okay with it, but we need, the public needs to have a...
We're going to, we're going to open up public comment, definitely.
I don't have any.
Okay. This is a time for a public comment. Is, do we have property owners that would like to come forward at this time?
I'm a property owner, but I'm okay with it.
Mr. Sly?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Kenneth Sly, 6185D, North Old Highway 81. And this was taken out of the paper out of, after the August 11th meeting. The headline states, "County considers ruined road name change." How can you change a road name that doesn't have one? Kind of hard to do. Plating and zoning also told Commissioners the county is heading for a next-generation 911 emergency system, which would address each residence instead of the driveway, which the addressing is now. My house is not addressed on a driveway. Nothing on 6185 is named to a driveway. It's a roadway, which is Old Highway 81. Has nothing to do with the driveway. As far as locating people when NIDA needed an ambulance, you can thank the Potter's for that. They stole the frame that the map was on, then they broke it in two pieces, and it was in about five different places before I finally hauled it up to my house. It ended up on the property south of me in Hergrass. As far as this new generation mailing, I don't know where that came from. Do you have a copy of this new generation system on 9/11? Have you seen it? That's what this is. It's been up 30, 35 years. That letter was not addressed to me. You had a copy last week, everybody. This is not addressed to me. It's addressed to the property, and it plainly states, "This is your permanent address. It will never change. When I move out, Mr. Gahl moves in, it still goes 6185." You know, there was no problem out there until this plat went in, and I don't know how you can plat one lot. It's just another building site. Nobody had any problems out there. Do you have any problems, Jim, with finding your way home any time?
No, but the emergency department.
No, I don't think so.
Well, let's keep comments between the neighbors to later time.
Anyway, over the years, I've been out there 48 years, and I can see no problem. It also states in here, "By zoning and planning, there's no rush on this project. We do not expect to change anyone's address that is out there." And yet, we're changing our addresses and planning and zoning as we are. I don't know. It's hard to make sense.
Well, let me just ask you a question. Are you against this right now with your, with your address staying the same? Are you?
No, I want my address to stay right where it is.
But if, if, if this motion comes before the Commission, if this motion, I'm not saying it it is, but let's just say, this motion comes before the Commission, are you okay with you keeping your address?
Well, I'd be okay with it. I see no reason for it.
Okay.
There's been no problem out there, as long as I've been there.
All right.
And then, this one lady on southeast, I can't say her name, she states, "Even now, I can't find it." Does she work, or does she just stay home? She says, "I can't find my residence." At this time, I cannot find it. It's right here in this, out of the journal. This naming of Rafter Road is strictly an ego trip. Rafter M has nothing to do with Saline County. It is southwest Kansas. A registered county brand, maybe, maybe not. The registers only last for five years, so I don't know if it's good or not. We've never been told. We don't know who holds it. Is anybody here from Roden Bridge?
Yeah.
I would wonder, how come you're taking the riprap off of that ward and that ditch out?
I'm not familiar, sir.
Pardon?
I'm not familiar. His name. I disguise her. I don't want to hear it.
Okay, so you don't think the county's doing it?
He didn't, he didn't, he didn't, he did not say that he did not think the county was doing that. And does that have anything to do with this, this name change?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Well, tell me what this is.
Because we want that end of the road out. I've seen it. Yep.
Is there anything else you'd like to add about this?
Well, I don't believe so this time. I'm not leaving yet.
All right.
Thank you.
You betcha. Thank you, Mr. Sly. Any other comments at this time?
I'm Kurt Marshall. We live at 301 West Rafter M. We put the addition in there. When we put the addition in the name, the road name was named after the addition. It was, had nothing to do with an ego trip. It was just a name that I didn't think anybody would, I didn't want it my name, so we just did Rafter M. The numbering system, since we've got it down to Rafter M, has clarified it a bunch. There has been trouble with the emergency before. The reason I didn't find, when the ambulance came after NIDA, was they missed the road down where that star is, and then turned around and came back, and finally got to Potter's, and then Carter's, and then Brian's, and then up to Sly's. But this has already clarified it, getting the numbers set off of Rafter M. So, the main thing we need is, then we're, David has a star down there. If we can put a Clearview Road sign up there, and then it'd be nice if we had a sign that said, "No Outlet" or "Dead End." Last year, there were two semis that came in there and ended up getting stuck, trying to get turned around, because they didn't realize that that bridge had closed at the north end. It was taken out. So, anyway, one favorite, and the other neighbors I've talked to are, the numbering systems helping now. If we can just get a road sign down there on Clearview. Thank you.
So, as presented right there, you're okay?
Yeah, I'm perfect. And then, I've talked to Potter's and Wagner's, and everybody else is fine with it.
Okay.
The only thing that I could see, when I went out there, I could see where they were confused as where to go, because the first thing I seen was that Rafter M up there, and I thought I was on Old 81, Outlet Road, whatever you call it, excess road.
What they're called, what they want to call Clearview, is that what you're saying?
And I can see where the emergency manager, or emergency preparedness, or whatever it was, EMS, would have not been able to find anything. Once they went to that, they seen that, well, where in the heck are, you know, do we go on left, or do we go what? I think that probably that was the biggest problem, finding somebody up the hill as it was, because I, I drove out there, and if I would have drove on up to the houses, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have known that that was...
We have them all marked now. There's signs up that say 225, and 301, and 286. Jim's painted signs and put them up.
Yeah, and then you got the, whatever you call it, the Kubota.
The decoration sign. I'm going to take, we're going to take that down and give it, we're going to take that down and give it up to Lucy.
The only thing I wanted to comment is, I understand that when Mr. Sly mentioned the, well, Mr. Neal brought it up first, about the 911.
The next-gen 911 system.
Next-generation 911. I understand, I remember that, because all of the county roads and highways are now being pointed out quite clearly, their names, and if they used to be ruined. being pointed out quite clearly, their names, and if they used to be rural Route 3, now they actually have a name. I missed it when I drove out there, and when I was almost to Bennington, I realized I had missed it, so I had to come back. My concern was why emergency vehicles missed it, because with GPS, I understand everything has a pinpoint on a map. But I was told that the, a lot of the, our vehicles, for example, the Fire District, a lot of them do not have the GPS systems in the vehicles, because that's probably the next thing that will be asked, or another Commission after us, to upgrade those vehicles to have that GPS navigational system built in right into the vehicle. Some of them don't have that yet, and I think that they're relying on knowing the area and signage. I just wanted Mr. Neal to refresh my memory and for our viewers today, what it takes to name a street, and if we named this Clear, Clearview Road today, can you honestly say that that is permanent and that will never change in the future?
I'm not ever gonna say never, because a future Commission can do what they feel like doing. There's two ways to name roads. Typically, when a subdivision is approved by the County Commission, road names are assigned at that time. For instance, the Rafter M subdivision, that little private driveway was assigned the name Rafter M. And tradition is to let whatever developer name the roads, they always like to name it after their daughters or whoever. Street like, I'm gonna call it Clearview for lack of a better term, that one had no name assigned to it, which is unusual, but I'm treating this the same way you would rename a no, a road name. So if you want to rename Old Highway 81 into anything, you know, name it after one of our famous linions or something like that, you just write a resolution, set up that road name, and change the road name. The only issue about changing road names is you also have to change all the street signs and everything else associated to the road name. In this case, there was no road name, so all we're doing is assigning one. It ends up changing the addresses, and we do have to put a street sign out.
And that frontage road, your road is private, that's why it's called Rafter M. That frontage road was being maintained by Saline County, is that correct?
Correct.
So we had a public road maintained by taxpaying dollars, never had a name, and so now we're putting a name on it which we will continue to maintain that road. Correct?
Correct. And I don't foresee the name changing. I don't see a reason why the name would change. My theory to street naming is that anything lined up with that road, right in that area, should keep that same name.
So, Mr. Marshall, all those roads, or that road leading up there to all those homes, that has to be maintained privately?
Yes.
And in the event that you don't, I take it mail won't be delivered to your homes? They can't get up there?
The mailboxes are down below. They're right on...
Okay, so no one has them right at their home? I didn't pay attention.
They're down on the front.
They're on Clearview.
All the mailboxes for all those homes will be on...
They're all gonna be on Clearview.
Yeah, they're already down there, they've been down there for years, right at the, right where Rafter M meets Clearview down at the bottom.
Okay, okay, so, I, you know, I don't remember seeing mailboxes, so I was...
Yeah, they're all there at the end. They all have the A, B, C, D on them.
Okay, so, and then I did go up as far as that road ran out, and then I wasn't sure if there was a cul-de-sac or something back there. I take it that that road just runs out, so I had to pull into somebody's driveway to turn around and to come back. But I missed those mailboxes. So because we will be maintaining that road, there'll be no problem with them getting mail, because our mailboxes are down there on that road.
The mail, the mail is usually pretty well handled. I mean, for all the grief we give the postal service, they do a great job delivering thousands of letters, and they do, they usually cluster rural postal boxes together, so it's not right in front of the house. Like Nicky mentioned, it's all down by Clearview, so that...
Correct.
The guy just pulls up, throws the mail in the right slot, and drives away.
And also, that's not a decision of this board, too, so...
Okay, so, and right now, there is no sign where the, is that a, is that a yellow or green star?
Yeah, kind of a yellow star.
Okay, so we would have a sign there, would, would, would the sign be, say, Old Highway 81 and Clearview? Are you gonna have a two?
Most likely yes. I'd have to double check with our county engineer to see how we name out the signs. I don't know all the Roden Bridge policy to that part.
Okay, all right, I think I...
It seems confusing to me to be going up Rafter M Road to get to 81. That seems awful confusing, for safety.
I'm not understanding.
When you go up to that, Neil, there's, right on the corner, there's a Rafter M sign.
Right here.
Right there. And you turn up that way, would you think that 81, North 81, address is clear at the top of that?
Normally not.
See what I'm saying? It does seem awful confusing now.
That's why we address off the driveways.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kurt.
Further public comments?
Yes, Commissioners, I'm Ken Sly, 6185D North Old Highway 81. There's been comment about the EMS getting to our house when Anita had an emergency. When I called in, the gal at 911 asked, "Do you want me to stay on the phone?" And I said, "Yes." And that phone call right on his cell, 14 minutes and 20 seconds to get point A to B. That's not bad response time for an ambulance. Supposedly were lost. And if they were lost, they would not have been lost if Potters had not tore down the sign that had a map for everybody living right up that lane. But 14 minutes is not bad for an EMS response to an emergency, living out there when they were supposedly lost. And there's no reason for them to be lost had that sign not been torn down and broken. And now I'm told I can't put it back up, for some reason.
Further public comment? I'll close this portion of the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for further questions, comments, or inaction.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the change of the frontage road that runs parallel to Old Highway 81, and change, and name it Clearview Road. Leave Rafter M lane and those homes addressed to that the same, and leave the Sly residents addressed at 6185D North Old Highway 81, as recommended by staff.
I'll second that motion. Any further public comment, any further Commissioner comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Did you got a three, three and oh that?
Oh, I didn't hear you say so. I apologize.
Okay, I was looking at you.
I apologize. That passed three zero. Thank you very much, I apologize, I didn't hear you. All right, thank you for coming, and thanks for all your hard work on this. I know it was a contentious issue, and we had, what, two or three public, or, you know, study sessions on it, and I know, I hope everybody going forward is somewhat happy, so thank you for your... Just for clarity, I will be getting in touch with Roden Bridge to find out what work order they need to place the sign and how that goes out there, including the "No Outlet" sign. And then probably this week, I will be setting out address changes to Mr. Spence's property and the Potter's property.
Correct.
So that they'll know when their new address is in effect.
All right.
Item number five.
Approval of County Commission minutes for the week of September 1, 2015.
Hear any public comment on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there any other business to come forward to the Commission at this time? Under announcements, we will meet again as a Commission at 1 o'clock upstairs to continue County Commission Day. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.